Hello, everybody. Welcome to the July 31st Select Board Meeting. Please join me in the question.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, just want to start off by letting everybody know that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live and upon demand when I will give the agenda. And at this point, I'm just going to ask the Select Board members to introduce themselves to ensure we have a call.
Mark Lamb.
I'm Dottie Philginett.
I'm Craig Barger.
Jennifer Stacy.
And Select Board Member Jamie Stebbins is not able to make it tonight, so he will be noted as absent in the minutes. We have our Town Administrator Conner Reed and our Executive Assistant, Elizabeth Hatt. So, the first item that we have on the agenda is a six o'clock public hearing. Correct?
Select Board of Easton as Licensing Authorities will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Coroner Boardroom, 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. On Monday, July 31st, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. to consider and act upon the application of Sri Laxmi Corporation Doing Business Scots Fine Wines and Spirits for a change of location of a Section 15 Off-Premises All Alcohol Beverage License from 646 Washington Street, Unit 3, Easton, Mass. To 646 Washington Street, Units 6, 7, and 8, Easton, Mass. In accordance with plans and file, Select Board's Office.
Thanks, Craig. So, at our January 23rd meeting, we approved the change of location for Scots Fine Wines and Spirits from Carreras Plaza, which was 669 Washington Street, to the DeAngelo Plaza, which is 646 Washington Street, Unit 6, 7, and 8, which is directly across the street. Unfortunately, the space was not ready for them to move in at that time. So, on March 27th, 2023, we approved another change of location to 646 Washington Street, Unit 3. Now, as the renovations are close to completion, they filed the final change of location and would like to move it back to 646 Washington Street, Unit 6, 7, and 8. And we have the owners Nick and Tina Dixit are here. And if you want to just come up?
Sure.
So, you must be the most patient business owner that we've had in Easton.
Yes.
But you're not that even are too far. It's pretty close.
Well, it's a lot of work to pick up and move probably as much work if it's next door or down the street. So, first of all, we'll say we appreciate you choosing Easton and staying here. So, do you want to tell us, you know, it's very clear what we're asking, but I want to give you an opportunity to just kind of talk about your store and, you know, if you have anything that you want people to know about it.
It's, everything is done. Brand new cooler salts, that, jumping, all of that. All we need to do is just wait for you guys to be approved and just move.
So, can you just need people to stop in and say hi to the vendors?
Yeah, just leave, yeah, yes, yes.
Well, it's a great location.
It's a good, it looks good.
I definitely want to come by and see it.
Yeah, hopefully.
You'll get foot traffic from the other businesses there and then get foot traffic from yours. You know, we've seen a lot of that.
Finally.
So, now you're going to stay there forever.
Yeah, no one away.
Any comments or questions from anyone on board?
Thanks for doing this meeting.
Thank you.
I echo that. Thank you.
Great. And congratulations for getting to this point.
And we encourage everybody to come and visit you.
Thank you.
All right. So, with that, Craig, if you'd like to make a motion?
So, we make the motion to approve the Sri Laxmi Corporation Doing Business Scots Fine Wine and Liquors, Spirits, I'm sorry, a change of location, Section 16 Off-Premises All Alcohol Beverage License from 646 Washington Street, Unit 3 to 646 Washington Street, Units 6, 7, and 8.
Second, Lamb.
So, that's Barger and Lamb all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent.
That was easy. Probably easier than move, huh?
Can I make one request with the board?
Sure.
If you guys can give me a permission, can I start just moving the inventory? Not, I'm not going to run the register.
So, we would just have to check with the A, B, C, C.
Oh, God.
As you know, they were the state entity that indicated, I believe, that although you were in the same address, but different units, we had to go through this twice. So, we'll double check, and if there's any way we can give some kind of leniency there to help you out, we will. So, our office will be in touch.
Okay. All right. Just let us know. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, good luck.
Thank you. Good to see you. Okay, next, we have the announcement of Purple Heart Day on August 7th. Usually, we would have Jamie read that, as he's a veteran, but he can't be here tonight, so Craig, if you'd be so busy, try to read that.
I'd be happy to do that. And Scott, do you want to read it?
Let me go read it.
Whereas, the people of the town of Easton have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community and the armed forces for the good of all. And whereas contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from Easton who served in harm's way in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas citizens of our community have been killed in action while serving in the armed forces and have been posthumously awarded the Purple Heart for their ultimate sacrifice. And whereas citizens of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart for their bodily sacrifice of being wounded in action while engaged in combat. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration in present use and was created as the badge of military merit on August 7th, 1782, in Newburgh, New York, by General George Washington. Initially, it was made of purple cloth shaped as a heart with the word merit sewn upon it. And whereas the heritage it represents is sacred to those who know the price paid to wear the Purple Heart. And whereas August 7th is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Appreciation Day. And now, therefore, it be it proclaimed, we, the Easton Select Board, on behalf of the town of Easton, go on record to hereby proclaim Easton, Massachusetts, a Purple Heart Town honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform that were wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. Also be it proclaimed, we, the town of Easton, will recognize August 7th annually as the Purple Heart Day and urge the people and organizations of Easton to display the American flag as well as other public expressions of recognition of our Purple Heart recipients.
Thanks, Craig. Corey, do you want to come up and talk a little bit about what the plans are for that?
Yes, please. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for having me and thank you for reaffirming the Purple Heart Day proclamation each year. Appreciate your support on this very important event each year. So, next Monday, August 7th, at 9:00 a.m., we will be honoring National Purple Heart Day here in Easton, right outside of the town offices, 136 Elm Street, at the flag pole. The ceremony will take place outside. We'll do a flag raising. And I have secured a guest speaker who's a Purple Heart recipient. He's actually a friend of mine. It would be nice to hear from him. He's a veteran of Operation Enduring Freedom, which is Afghanistan. And Corey was injured in 2013 when he received the Purple Heart due to wounds sustained. So, the proclamation basically claimed Purple Heart Medal, it's a solemn distinction that's presented to service members who've been wounded or killed as direct result of enemy action while serving in the military. And it's also presented to the surviving family members for those who cannot receive it. So, we make sure to pay special respects to family members who, there'll be many in attendance, that are survivors, spouses. So, hoping for a good turnout. Again, that's August 7th, next Monday, 9:00 a.m. We'll meet at the flag pole up front of town offices, and we will have a reception this year right here in the Colleen Coroner Boardroom afterwards. So, it should be a nice opportunity to get to hear some of these stories that are very important, that, you know, they be shared. Because the Purple Heart Medal, you know, it's not like what you see in the movies, and it's, it may not be what people imagine or what they think when they, in their mind of what that means. So, it's important that we raise awareness on this special day, and we'll keep the flag raised for 24 hours. So, people walking in, doing business in town hall can see that and maybe spark up a conversation about it. So, just appreciate your support, and any questions, just let me know.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you. This is a wonderful, solemn event, and you do a fantastic job every year. We look forward to it. Look forward to hearing you speak. Thank you.
I look forward to it as well.
Thank you for all you do to support and honor veterans.
Thank you.
I look forward to it, and you have a remarkable ability to bring in just wonderful people to speak on behalf of veterans. So, thank you very much for that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have an announcement. The Blanchay Ames Elementary School Ribbon Cutting and Community Celebration is going to be on August 20th at 10:00 a.m. Do you want to tell a little bit about that?
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. So, we are all super excited that we've reached substantial completion with the Blanchay Ames Elementary School project. The building itself is obviously, for anyone driving by it, has been complete since the holidays when kids moved in. And now, the grounds are also complete. And so, we want to be able to share that with the community who is so supportive of that project and trying to have it on a date and time where folks can come. So, it's on a weekend. It's Sunday, August 20th. There will be a kind of formal ceremony with a ribbon cutting from about 10 to 11. And then, from 11 to 1, there will be food trucks, coffee truck, which I'm particularly excited about. I think ice cream, some yard games. The playgrounds, if you haven't been, are awesome. And of course, tours to be inside with educators and school leaders for folks to get in and enjoy it. We're also going to have Police, Fire, and Public Works come and have touch of truck events there as well. So, really, just an awesome day for the community, whether you have kiddos in the school or not. So, it's free and should be a good time. I would make a joke about weather, but I don't want to. So, I don't want to jinx it. So, yep.
I follow. Any comments or questions from the board? I'm really excited to go in there and see it now all set up. The last time we were in, it was, you know, brand new with the punch list. I haven't been on the playgrounds yet. Just driving by, they look amazing.
They're amazing. And it's a really incredible project. You know, we, the school planning committee wrapped its work up. I think they met 70 or 80 times over the course of seven years and through a pandemic. And the project came in pretty much on schedule and about 14 million under budget. So, we're really excited. And thanks to all the inspectional staff in the room as well, who've been in there probably more times than they care to, to make sure that it was being delivered as it was intended.
Well, I hope people realize that it's not just for families or people with kids. You know, it's a really good opportunity for us to express our appreciation to everybody in this town that supported it.
Right.
I'm very proud of it. I know that the schools, you know, the school system and this board is very proud of it. And I hope that people will feel a lot of joy when they go to see that because it is something that Easton can be really happy, happy to have. All right. The next thing is the launch, I'm sorry, the announcement of the planned dates for a special town meeting, October 23rd, and the debt exclusion election, November 4th, associated with the Easton Public Safety Public Works Facilities Replacement Project.
Great. Thank you, Dottie. So, speaking of large projects, something that's been in the works in one form or another for nearly 10 years now with the Municipal Building Committee is to quantify the needs of our public safety and public works facilities. So, police, fire, DPW on Center Street, Water Division, and start preparing to replace those buildings. We've been working through the Municipal Building Committee for a couple of years on that process now. And they are now at the point where they're getting into value management, and we'll be locking in a project budget tomorrow night. And although the board has to still take formal votes, which I anticipate you will do in your meetings in August, in September, we wanted to make sure that we were giving advance notice to the public of the dates that we have internally vetted with all the principles for town meeting and elections, the clerk, moderator, town council, making sure that we have the venues available to us for a special town meeting on October 23rd, which is a Monday night, and the associated debt exclusion election, which would be Saturday, November 4th, from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. This is roughly the same cadence as we followed with the Blanch Ames Elementary School, where the board voted for, to open a town meeting and call for an election in August and September for those two things to occur at the end of October and beginning of November. So, we wanted to get these dates out there now. The next item on the list is to announce an updated project website where we have substantially easier to navigate format for folks who, as we head towards finalizing the budget. And for most people, the item they care most about of any project like this is what would the tax impact be? As we get that information in August and September, having, you know, video tours there, community forum dates there, the election dates there, so that if people are tuning in and following along with this project for the first time, they can get the information that they need to get brought up to speed, hopefully quickly, with that website. So, those are the dates we're looking at. Just like with the Blanch Ames School, the October 23rd proposed town meeting, we would limit that warrant, provided the board is willing to, to only articles related to this building project so that the entire night can be devoted to presenting the project in a very comprehensive manner, including project financing, tax impact, design, the backstory of why we're at the place we are to do this project. And we would have a second fall town meeting later in November for our more routine fall town meeting business. We will be sending a postcard to every household in Easton at some point in August, inviting folks to come in to information forums and facilities tours at both Public Works and the Willthrop Street Police and Fire so that they could see these facilities for themselves. I say this, including when they're not in a room, but most folks try specifically not to go into at least one out of two of those departments. So, it's hard to successfully communicate what these facilities look like. You know, they're originally designed and built when the color television was first being sold. So, it's really important for people to get in and see them. So, those are the dates we're looking at. The principles are available. Select Board, you've indicated you're available, so I wanted to just get that on the agenda and...
That's good. And we have to do a good word, spreading word mouth because we don't have a local newspaper anymore. So, we will be doing, you know, press, press information through our social media channels, the Mailer, like Connor said. But really, the way that we want people to know, even when you do everything, people will still say, "Oh, I had no idea this was going on." It happened with the school. People in the neighborhood were like, "We didn't know a new school was coming." We put flyers on people's doors. Like, we really just need to count on people bringing five friends to each one of these things. So, it's a big investment. It's very exciting for the community and for your friends.
Great. Thank you.
All right. And did you want to give the website address?
Sure. So, the second item is we have been kind of just updating the Municipal Building Committee's committee webpage for a couple of years now, which is fine. It has a ton of information, but it's not the most navigable place. So, our project managers, PMA, have built a new website for it. It's EastonPSW, so publicsafetyworks.com. This, again, it has a much cleaner landing page. There's abbreviated tours of each of the three facilities that people can click through. There's photo folders of the existing conditions at each of these facilities, as well as some preliminary renderings of what these new facilities would look like and preliminary site plans as well for the Public Safety Public Works Complex at 524 Depot Street, as well as the new fire substation located at Daly's Corner on Stonehill's property. You have an item later tonight to execute a lease for 50 years with the college for five acres of land to make that possible. So, again, that's eastonpsw.com. It'll be featured prominently on the town's website. We'll be pushing that out through our social media and through, I assume, the press group we work with, with Police and Fire this week. And the project will also have its own dedicated Facebook page, to your point. There's no more local paper like the Eastern Journal, which makes it really, really hard to give this information out to folks. My own feelings about social media aside, that is where a lot of folks get information. And so, we feel it's very important that there is a dedicated resource specific to this project. We'll obviously push updates out through the town pages, social media pages. But that's going to get mixed into the feed with all the other updates and all the other business that these agencies do. This will be a central place where there can be information, factual information pushed out to the public in a format that folks engage with. So, that will also be available starting today.
Terrific. Any questions, comments? Okay. The next item is a notice that the town offices are going to be closed for the website.
No, for the case.
You would add a later date. So, there are certain timelines after... So, there are certain timelines after you vote where ballots need to be ordered and delivered. And based on when we're scheduling it, those will be specific discreet items at your August 21st and September 11th meeting.
Yeah. So, this is just a heads up, a safety date, if you will. All right. So, the next one is town offices are going to be closed on Friday, August 18th, for employee training. And notices will go out via the website, social media, ECAD, et cetera. So, people will know that to come that day. All right. Next, we have licenses and permits. A one-day liquor license for Stonehill College for a private bridal shower at Donahue Hall, 320 Washington Street, August 6th, from noon to 5:00 p.m. They've applied for a one-day all alcohol license, and an Easton Police Detail is not required. Can I get a motion to agree?
So moved, Bajra.
Second, Lamb.
Bajra and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, Stonehill College, the Metro South Legislative Reception, Metro, Metro South Chamber of Commerce Legislative Reception is out on Donahue Hall, 320 Washington Street. That's going to be on October 5th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And this is an annual event for them. An Easton Police Detail is not required. And it's from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. Want to make a motion, Chris?
So moved, Bajra.
Second, Lamb.
Bajra and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. And next, we have the Eastern Chamber of Commerce fundraiser that's going to be held at Osamese Hall on October 12th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And Lisa DeVos is here to tell us a little bit about it. If you want to come up, Lisa, just tell us about the fun event. I went to the one last year and it was incredible, so...
Well, thank you very much. So, yes, this will be our second year. It's our sole fundraiser for the chamber. We're going to be holding it at Osamese Hall. We're hoping for approximately 150 guests. This year, we will have the wine. In addition to that, we will have bourbon and beer. And we're having a lot of the local restaurants serve. We'll have the local artists and local musicians, hopefully, who are working with the school, as we did last year, to have the chamber orchestra play for, if the kids come and play, and try to make a community event.
Oh, that's great. Excellent.
If we, if we know of an artist who lives in Easton who might be interested in donating by contacting us, is that helpful?
Absolutely, yes. Yes, we would love that.
So, is, is that, do you do an open call for artists to...
We did, yes. So, currently, right now, we have about 20 artists, and they are mostly from the eastern area. And they've been very generous in their donations. And last year, it was very successful, and, you know, we were silent auction. So, yes, we very much welcome anybody that wants to be a part of it, absolutely.
That's, that's great.
Do you have to buy tickets?
We will be selling tickets. We are still figuring out, I think it's going to probably be about $60 on a ticket this year, because we are doing a progressive-type meal with all of our restaurants, which we did do last year. As I said, we'll have a bacon, bourbon, and beer station. And there will be, like, the, last year, we had six different lines, that's what probably 84 this year. So...
So, how do people would go to the Chamber of Commerce to get, to buy a ticket?
Yes. So, we haven't, we haven't quite, we haven't put that up there yet, but we will be. But last year, we did a lot of it through social media. You know, it was a lot of it was on our, and the website. So, either way, the tickets are done, are just online. And, you know, there's actually no ticket given out. We just purchase a ticket. We keep a list of everybody that has purchased it and has to check in, and just check the names off, so you don't have to physically bring a ticket with you.
Great. Excellent. Well, that's exciting, and it's great for the chamber. The chamber does a tremendous job in Easton, really tremendous, because it's a small, a small chamber, a small community. And you have wonderful events, lots of attendance, and I enjoy going to all of the events that you have.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right.
So, I move to approve the Eastern Chamber of Commerce fundraiser at Oakseamese Hall, Borough Street, Easton, October 12th, 2023, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second, yeah.
And I just want to add that Easton Police Detail is not required. So, that's Bajra and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. All right.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
I was putting it up there early, so I can get it on the calendar.
Oh, yes, you're right. Thank you.
All right. Next, the Tricentennial Committee Appointment. We have Diane Lusardi. We have a vacancy, and Diane has applied to be on that, on the committee. And the term on that expires June 30th, 2024. Hold on a second, I'm just trying to see my, I'm stuck here. So, the Tricentennial Committee's charge is to lead the town in a year-long celebration of Easton's tricentennial from 1725 to 2025, that commemorates Easton's long history, engages all residents, and celebrates Easton's enduring 300-year tradition of community spirit. The committee's mission is to celebrate the strong Easton town spirit that thrives in our community, to offer diverse programming that is welcoming and inclusive of all Easton residents, to strengthen bonds of family and community with events that bring people together, to involve local youth in cooperation with schools and varied in-form educational opportunities, to recognize the positive and lasting impact of contributions made by Easton community members, to connect the present and the past by coordinating, sharing, and supporting historical events, to provide a stage for and spotlight on Easton art, music, and culture, both current and past, and to collaborate with, support, and encourage all Easton nonprofits, commissions, committees, and town departments, and taking advantage of the unique opportunity the tricentennial offers to educate the public and to share the history goals and the mission. So, it's, it's a really great opportunity, exciting for somebody to serve on that. And Diane, if you want to come up and just tell us, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you'd like to be on the committee?
I'm Diane Lusardi. I live at Landflyer Lane in South Easton. I've lived here for 22 years. I've lived in the town of Easton for 52 years. And Dave Clifton, who is the chairperson, is my neighbor. And he asked if I should go up and be secretary. So, I said I would. I, I think, of course, in my life here in Easton, I've been involved in many organizations, from Boy Scouts to the Vatican Conception Church, Little League. As a matter of fact, there's a field named after my former husband, Anthony and his other field. And I was instrumental in starting the Snack Bar, as you all know, if you've been here. So, I've been involved in a lot of organizations. I really enjoy it. Currently, I am the chairperson of Guess and Village, too. And I've met with most of you in the corner, so... And I work with town elections. So, that's my story. And I think it's going to be a great opportunity for the town. It's really going to be fun. I remember the, the 250th, when my kids were really small, and it was just great. It was really fun. So, I want to be involved.
Oh, that's terrific. Well, Mark is the select ward representative of the committee, so...
Yes.
Uh, do you have anything you want to share?
Diane was at our last meeting.
Yes.
And she's here tonight. So, that's a good thing. So, I know that she's a wonderful community participant, as she has mentioned, and I think the group is very lucky to have her.
Thank you.
I mean...
Thank you.
Excellent.
It's a challenge.
It's, it's going to be a big one, you heard.
Fireworks. Fire department, we're good?
We got a big show.
And I'll keep going way back to when he was a little guy. I've been here a while, and I'm happy to serve.
Well, that's great. You know, one of the goals was to try to make it a diverse committee with people that have been here for a while, new people, younger, older, you know, people that have kids. So, really trying to hit all the perspectives. So, somebody with your knowledge and experience in the town, I'm sure you'll have a lot to offer. And everybody loves when someone's going to be the secretary, so... I know. All right. Craig, do you want to make a motion?
I move to appoint Diane Lusardi to the Tricentennial Committee with an expiration date of June 30th, 2024.
Second, Lamb.
So, that's Bajra and Lamb, and we're going to do a roll call vote. We can start with you, Mark.
Lamb Lusardi?
Full genetti Lusardi?
Bajra Lusardi?
Stacy Lusardi.
Excellent. So, you are not, you will be on the committee, and you'll be getting contacted by the town clerk's office, and they'll have you come in and get sworn in.
Okay.
And they'll get you up to speed on when the meetings are and get you on the list for agendas.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, Diane.
The next update or action and discussion item we have is an apartment update for mobile integrated health and community mental health, the Health and Community Services, Police, and Fire Departments.
That's table. Good evening, everyone. Keith Bloom, Police Chief. We're here to discuss our community health program. Welcome to be introducing our, our staff will be here, so we'll be brief introductions. So, just for a little historical perspective, back in 2017, the Police Department, Health and Community Services, and Easton links a whole part of it, primarily due to the opiate crisis that we're facing and we're being severely impacted. And so, what it, what it looked like for us back then was, we respond to a potential overdose or suspected overdose. We would notify a resident who was a volunteer, it happened to be a nurse, who was passionate about trying to help. And following that police contact, we would provide the name to this volunteer. And she would go out and try to provide resources. And we're really limited to reactive policing. We weren't being proactive. We weren't trying to really solve the problem. We were trying to address it in real time. Again, facing that reactive only policing, we partnered with, really, everybody in this room is part of this, and of course, the leadership and the town administrative, to bring on a full-time mental health clinician, which the town has done. And we advertised, and we worked hard to get this position where we wanted. And we hired a tremendous person, which we're very excited to introduce you to. And so, what the Police Department now is doing is trying to address these problems before they start. We have a list of community members that we know are at risk, and now we're trying to be more proactive and reach out to them with a police officer, well-introduced, and our mental health clinicians. So, not just responding to a problem after it's already happened, we're trying to adopt a holistic approach to get to these residents before we have a significant problem. And it will tie into fire, health, community services, veteran services, though we're not just limited to substance abuse. We are looking at domestic violence and mental health, veterans services. So, we're really come together as a, as a group to better the community. And I'll let the fire chief talk about our paramedicine program.
So, the, so the paramedicine program, our mobile integrated healthcare M.I.H. program, the need was really present prior to when I came to town, Chief Pytridge was here, identified the need to build a gap in our ability to address issues proactively, as Chief Bloom was alluding to. And, and I think the need was in HCS as well, and then the pandemic happened. And then that really put a spotlight on that glaring gap in our ability to proactively deal with problems. And the pandemic really brought that to light. So, Chief Pytridge worked with Kristen, head of my ride, and my, one of my very first actions here before I was actually sworn in was to sit in an interview for the position that Captain Promosi occupies, which is our EMS and Public Health Officer. He runs our M.I.H. program. And we were quick to identify and develop this program where we would get out and utilize our skill set to proactively deal with the things that we come across. So, we have a lot of overlap, extreme overdoses, hoarding, a whole host of other things. Home visits is something we're going to, and you'll hear a lot of these programs and issues that we're taking on. But I will tell you that our job tonight is to, as the department has to say, introduce these people, you'll hear from them. So, to sing Captain Promosi's praises, you know, I will, I will end my, my opening with that. When I sat in the interview, my final question to him was, was he the person to lead this program, to be the gold standard that other departments would come and ask us how we do it? And he responded in the affirmative that he was that person. And I will tell you that we get regular inquiries from the area and the region and throughout the state. And actually, he has spoken nationally about our program and how it's developing. So, it's a tribute to the work he's doing, and we're proud to have him. And the collaborative we have is really unprecedented in the area.
Thank you. Did you want to add a question before I...
Yeah, just before I turn it over, he's going to come up. But Officer Chris LaCount is our community outreach officer. He's been, he's in his eighth year now as a police officer. He's been trained in various crisis intervention, mental health classes, certifications. And so, I'll let him talk about what a day would look like with, with he and his all the commission people along the road together. And again, just, again, to tell everything he's doing. You know, we've, we've been in a staffing issue for the last few years, which we've been coming to the board and recognized with things. So, it was, it was something very important that my predecessor wanted to get, and we were able to get it. And I'm seeing that with my goal for...
So, as the Director of Public Community Services, I'm just thrilled to be able to introduce you guys tonight to Stephanie and Todd. It was, as Keith said, took us a long time to pound out what we were looking for, and then it took us even longer to real estate committed to getting the right person. And I think we did that with Stephanie. She joined us back in February. She brought 20 years of experience in the, in the mental health field with her, much of it with State, working with the Department of Children and Families and with the Mass Department of Mental Health. Building off of her experiences with State as a clinician, she was a member of a community crisis intervention team. She saw this new position. I remember speaking to this in her interview and in some other pieces about being able to take some of those concepts and skills and practices and really embed them in her own community. She is a part of this community. And she's helping us grow something very, very special here in town. She also continues to grow professionally. I'm going to put a little plug in there. She recently was accepted into the graduate certificate in Crisis Response and Behavioral Health Program at William James, which is the first of its kind of credentialing tool that offers cutting-edge education for law enforcement and mental health clinicians specifically on the work that they're doing together. She also secured a 100% scholarship, so wow, that's a great thing to have. Now that you've heard a little bit about each of the members and what our team is trying to do together, the chiefs and I would like to give, like to give you an opportunity to hear directly from the people making it happen. So, we're going to take a minute, and we're going to give up our seats to them, and let them tell you about what's going on with the community. So, Tim, Chris, Stephanie?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Tim is like a normal friend. She knows, she knows the, the whole setup. But Stephanie and Chris, this is your first time with the board, so we appreciate you being here tonight.
Yeah, I was. Yeah, thank you. I'm the chair, I'm a member of the select ward, I'm the chair of Reed, Farm Heads, and members of the community. Thank you very much for taking us on out of a busy agenda. Congress will give us a report midnight. No, but again, thank you very much. It's important for these programs to get out there in community, and it's a privilege for us to show it, I guess. Thank you. So, our chiefs and Director Kennedy started talking about our community emergency medical services program. So, this is a presentation we, I had the privilege of giving a couple of years back in 2021. It was really highlighted by COVID, as the chief explained. But briefly, it's, it's a preventative medicine program, is what it comes down to. And when you look back through the fire service, the fire service learned through experience that one of the best ways to stop fires was to prevent them. As we moved into EMS throughout the years, we are taking that same approach now, where we're seeing that the medical emergency call that we go to are very large part of it, too. And you're really actively pursuing programs that cause prevention, so you can get them before an emergency happens. So, we took a lot of data to get there. We collaborated with a lot of healthcare agencies around us in our community, and we came up with data points. And State, CTH, also gave us a lot of data, some data points that we should be addressing inside of our community. Among those was targeting of vulnerable populations. Primarily, our programs initially started with heart health, senior safety, children with special healthcare needs, and those seeking treatment for substances, and reducing pediatric trauma. So, we took all of those programs, which is a lot, it seems like we're not, it was a big lift. But we were able to take those programs on, and we saw a lot of positive interaction with the community once we started those programs. After seeing the success in the collaboration between our departments and our interaction with the community, we decided what's the next step? We have to, we have to keep this program moving, growing. So, we took another look at the data, where are we going? And we started to see trending in our mental health and substitute services, our need for services, I should say, our callouts. So, taking that same approach, we created this community health program where we're going to take on these as primary tasks. And again, that's not something that's easy to do. It takes a little bit of, I shouldn't say a lot, a bit of effort from every department, and it takes a lot of professionals, work... And it takes a lot of professionals working collaboratively to make that happen. So in 2023, our calls from multiple A were about 10% of our murders are sponsored. So that's a lot. That's a significant amount. Trying to take that on is just part of our bookwork. Everybody goes to these calls. The police department goes, we go. And we had to decide a way that would proactively approach this to prevent the issue from occurring again and again and again, right? And also health isn't something that you can jump in there and want to get correction. And it's a lifelong trend for a lot of people. And we're part of that training and response. So we expanded to include a partnership between UCS, Fire, and Police through our mental health counselor, Stephanie, who's going to take the community here and introduce herself. But it expands the tools and toolbox. And I'll probably use that phrase a little bit tonight because we have to have a lot of tools and those toolboxes to reverse these things. Sometimes something needs a hammer, sometimes it needs a little bit of a scalpel, right? And it's important to have all of those things available. So by involving all the different professionals and their backgrounds and their education and experience, we can provide what we call wraparound care purpose. So we can take a large community issue, such as 10% of our call volume, given on the fella, and then approach that in a way that creates a web of care around. So that team-based interdisciplinary wraparound care for the individual is still there. So big problems, but individuals, which is purpose. So all of that being said, in February 2023, we invested in a full-time dedicated community mental health DIs. Did she say it right now? As she does in our office as well.
Well, Kristen did a lot of the job, which is important, but I've been here for about six months. And before, there are a lot of years with State and mental health field. So when this opportunity came up in Easton, it just felt really natural to want to continue the work here. And I was doing a lot of the CCIT, like crisis intervention, the community crisis intervention teams. We pulled together groups of people from every walks of life to talk to other person that might be struggling. And maybe they're in and out of the jail system and they have crisis coming out a lot with police interacting. And we just saw a lot of success of being able to know how to handle some of these situations and manage them to prevent crisis, to support the family members who are impacted. And so we wanted to kind of similarly do something like that. I wanted to, I came into this position. And meeting Kristen, she was part of those teams too. It kind of just felt like a natural step, I guess, to bring that all to Easton, so. So a lot of it is we trying to provide education to community members and support them, collaborate with what's already here and the providers that are local to bring services into Easton and then collaborate with all the different departments that Easton has. So I'll bring that to the care team. So in wanting to do something similar here, we came up with, I'll give it to Kristen. We're going to get risk empowerment of the care team instead of CCIT burdened. Take away all of the prices out of the label of it all in order to sound a bit more supportive in the sense that we're trying to prevent maybe the crisis or look at it after crisis so that we can try to see how to handle it differently going forward. So it's basically trying to have an interdisciplinary group dynamic between Fire, Police, myself, Veteran Services, Housing Department, or Health, all that kind of stuff to talk about situations that are impacted, an individual or family that be impacting, touching on all of those things to see. Because if you find out we're all trying to work the same, right, like I'm trying to address it here, you might be trying to address it in a different way. Some in a different way. But being able to be collaborative and talk about, come up with a solution that's something best for that family.
Thank you. Thank you all. I was getting that. Yeah, it's just the three of us kind of working together. So Dr. Chief Solomon was here. He kind of came up with the idea of a community resource officer based off of what Main Street Police Department does. They have all sorts of popular problem-oriented policing, going to common calls. But it's usually always the same reason. They figured out it's mental health, it's substance abuse. Why are we going this one address 20 times? Dig deeper, find out, is there a mental health issue going on? So before Stephanie was on board, any number of Easton Police Department, our department went on these calls. But we never really had someone to go. So we're just kind of like cramming our ass together and trying to figure out solutions. Stephanie mentioned I would go into a monthly community crisis intervention training team meeting in our time. Now we actually have two, but one in Brockton, one in each month. You know, people bounce ideas as professionals from every different agency you can think of there. But without having Stephanie on board, we still had no one to really go through. So now it's, I mean, I think the three of us are probably in communication daily. You know, they're running together. I'm on four and two schedule for police. But even on days off, we're still concentrating off of each other. So if a call happened on my day off, I'm still aware of it. I check with Stephanie, see if she's aware of it. And we kind of developed a plan one day a week. Chief's me available for me and Stephanie to run around again. So it's been good. We all follow the people on calls. Could be in call. Could be elderly, little process things, could be domestic violence victim, it could be, as Tim mentioned earlier, a hoarding situation. It's got a broad area that we kind of cover, but it's been good so far. So it's a good team now.
Yeah, it's pretty good. During one of our meetings, Stephanie made a comment. I put it on the slide just because I thought it really summed up everything that we're trying to do. It was the least restrictive level of care, providing the most appropriate places for patients, or the person, I should say. And I thought that was great. I was like, great, presentation finished. Good night, everybody. But it really was. It demonstrates that there's lots of, again, tools in the toolbox that we have over the line that we're able to do. So when we approach mental health calls, there's different laws that we can follow. Section 12 is one on the medical side, section 35 on the police side. You guys can explain the story if you choose. But they can be very imposing on somebody's care. They require some freedom taken away for those types of things. So again, approaching these calls that we're doing the least restrictive amount of care to provide the most appropriate placement for that particular person, right? Again, we're not swinging a sledgehammer to figure this out, but we're bringing in a whole team of people from lots of different backgrounds to provide the best care for that individual. And again, that includes up to benefits board, veterans, direct department. I mean, if we could take, if we could name every department in the town, it really is a big lift. It takes a lot of training. These guys are engaged in going to training and giving training. They're very humble about what they do in their, in their, in their company meetings, but they don't just attend, they teach them, right? So it's a big part there. And the health and wellbeing checks is happening inside the patient's home. And I think that's huge when we think about the best place for somebody to heal, for somebody to recover. I think, I can't think of any place I'd rather be than at home. So taking the clinical out of clinician and getting into the home care is a big step forward for this program. And that brings us up to substance use awareness and education. So, you know, I think that nobody's a stranger to the epidemic of opioids in our community, our state, our nation, even worldwide. You know, the statistic up here is very unfortunate, but I think it's very important. And we can see the growth and change of opioids throughout the years. I think when the pandemic hit, it kind of overshadowed the epidemic, right? Because it was a larger problem, but it didn't mean that that problem went away. And as we look at our statistics in our local community, we can see that they're continually trending in an upwards pattern, just like the State saw. So there's different ways that we track a lot of this data. I'll speak to the ones that I personally work with. Everybody's aware of Sunrec. They're very good at tracking our calls and our data there. The other thing that we do is EMS community is we submit all of our data to a system called Matrix, which is a department called the Health. And all the statistics come back to us so we can guide where our community care should be. But that's just the tip of the iceberg. There's also another program, SIM, which I'll defer to you later.
So SIM stands for Critical and System Management Systems. Almost 40 has gone out. I actually attend the training with Chief Boon. So basically, every community's involved in state. If there is an overdose, now the participation varies per department. Our department was more in favor of doing it and kind of on top of it. So anytime there's an overdose in town, police and Fire Officer will be there. With that, we send out a page through a page system we have. Send a little bit of text message to Stephanie, myself, Chief Boon, you, 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 Chief Adams, well. So we get the alert that there was an overdose, whether it's working or not working. And any one of us can enter this into the system. So if, say, it was an Easton resident that went to Brockton. As long as that gets entered in the system, we'll get an alert that someone in, just say, Main Street was, had an overdose. That gives us the information what they overdosed on. Was it a fatal overdose? Was it not a fatal overdose? Was it not our county administrator, et cetera, what hospital they went to? So that's more information for Stephanie to follow up. And then with all this data, we are able to look at, I can go on, any one of us on the website at any given time and see how many overdoses the communities had. As Tim mentioned, we've had 16 so far this year, so we are training helper again. But with now this care team, we have the proper information. We know where they're struggling. And Stephanie, I can go and follow up. Are they in rehab? Are they interested in going to rehab? Was this like a one-time fluke thing or?
Trying to be there where they're at. Really, that's a lot of what we're doing. Just trying to follow up with the hospital. They went to the hospital. Medical floor they might be in. I call over, park, go visit with them. Try to see where they're at and their readiness, I guess, to recover. And give them information. We've worked on different envelopes too, that are going to be the substance use center health and domestic violence. So as officers respond, they can use those kind of resource envelopes with families. And it'll have skin kind of information inside. But I think it's always good to try to at least make a phone call, face-to-face connection to see if we can be part of the journey to shift to changing, so. And we've become pretty aware. We've gone over to Crisis in Brockton. We're going to a substance abuse program next week, I think it is, Plymouth. So really trying to put a face for the human and speak about programs so that we can tell people have informed conversation around, like this is what this program can offer, this is what it can. But this is kind of, you know, what you might need to be able to get help with. And then we update the SIM's data as to whether or not someone's open to it. And it gives you, you know, you can see if this been the same person a couple of times that I've had overdoses. What they're open to, sit on, and just trying to give them support, yeah, that they're on the support, so.
As Tim mentioned too, it's a relaxed approach. I know when people see this uniform and they shut down, they're like, they don't, they don't want to talk to police. They're uncomfortable. They think I'm there for police matters. So usually when Stephanie and I do go and follow up, so I am in play calls. I let them know right off the bat, I'm not here for police reasons. We're here for hope, which is, we're here to give, if you want, shout out on you, how are you doing? So definitely they feel a little easier. They don't see the uniform. They're a lot more open to us. We can look at both of us, telling us, you know, what's going on, something like that, so. But yeah, we're meeting them. We're not forcing them, hey, can you come into the station or can you come here? Well, we're where they are.
And that's the biggest part of this program, tools in the toolbox again, right? Interaction with the community, have that conversation, making those things happen. And that is, is one way to approach it. And another way to approach it is just to get out there and give some education and some opportunity for that education. The way we achieve the opportunity through education is through our Sharps Awareness and Education Program. It's one of our community EMS programs. I've instructed, I've instructed community EMS. But it's also been around in the form of Abby's Waste Collection Day for many, many years with Health and Community Services. So they've been out with their side by side. The police have been out there with us as well, taking back medications. And it's a really good program. One, it keeps the Sharps on a rotation, right? That's one part of the program. But another big part of the program is anytime anybody comes in to drop off Sharps, there's no questions asked. There's no stigma attached, and there's education available. So they can, they can look at a flyer, they can pick up a piece of educational information and take that back. And again, meet them where they're at, which I think is very important. And just last week, we shipped out another 200 pounds of Sharps, which is fantastic. The program's doing very well there. In addition to that, our medication disposal kiosk, so I should mention that the Sharps kiosk is at Easton Park Department Station 3 on Bay Road. It's available and open to the public during business hours. Also, our medication disposal kiosk, when I say our, the police manage those ones. They do a great job at it. That one's also available to the public pretty much 24/7. So it's up there as well. And we've had some great success with that partnerships with AMZ, DEA Drive Take Back Day. I'm getting a lot of agency logs into our toolbox to make these things happen. But that, all of this gives us opportunity to interact with the community and start that education, communication that's part of it. And again, getting engaged with the community, this is one of the newer programs. Want to pass it back over to Seth?
Sure. So this is a pretty exciting partnership we're, um, Easton's taking on. But it's with William James College Interface and we can kind of start it up tomorrow, so we'll have lives soon. But basically what it is, is we're partnering with the school department and William James College and the town to offer services to residents, any resident in the town of Easton, as well as any student to be able to get mental services. So it's a helpline that's Monday through Friday. Yeah, I was wrong there, right? So Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 9 to 5, Tuesday, 13 to 6. And it's a referral line, so somebody, anybody can call themselves and ask for services and explain what their situation is. They speak to the bachelor or mental health clinician on the other line who does like a frequent tape and tries to pair them with somebody who is going to be famous, whether it's to address substance abuse, domestic violence, whether or not they want telehealth or in person. And they connect them to a clinician within a pretty timely manner. I mean, waitlist these things for mental health services can be six months, eight months, a year. So they have a huge database of over 10,000 mental health professionals that they partner with. So their ability to find somebody who's within their networks, they have their health insurance or within their financials is much faster. So I think they said it's like within a couple of weeks that they give them a referral and they try to match them. And then they follow up afterwards to see how that went. Did that service provider get back to you? Did it seem like there's a connection? No? Okay, let me try somebody else. So they're gonna, they're gonna stay involved until somebody is able to get the treatment that they need. So it's not like a crisis necessarily line, but it's a, it's a line to be a call center to be able to get the help they need. So I think that's huge. I'm excited for that. I think it's very much needed. People can do it on their own time, when they're comfortable, when they're ready. And we can just be there to kind of help support and carry them through that process, so. And then the information will be on all the town websites and with a link to be able to just go right to the caller to their page and see what your sources are. That will be in all of the looks too. I have something here for it, but. So I feel like that's a really good piece of moving forward to get people help they need in a pretty time now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we've kind of, Chris Knight has done some partnerships and meeting with the community, the Gable Health Center over in Brockton. We've familiar with the long time, but just for people's awareness too. That's a kind of urgent care for Gable Health, so similar to like urgent care for medical. But you don't necessarily need to go to the emergency room, but you can't wait till you get to your primary care doctor next week. So it's kind of the urgent care in the sense that you're seen that day. And they're going to then decide whether or not you need to, you see by crisis and address it more immediately, or whether or not they can kind of connect you to top sort of service that's local. So we explored that and so it's only started January 1st, so they're still kind of working out some of the keys as far as insurance and those kind of pieces. But it seems like it's, it'll be a great way to get people help and connect them without necessarily having to go to the emergency room. Instead, kind of least restrictive, if we can get people help in a way that's going to feel comfortable and safe for people, then that's kind of good to go. And then this mobile crisis intervention, which they have 24 hours. They can meet people at their house, anywhere. They meet with people in the emergency room, maybe too. But that's a 24-hour mental health service that people are going to evaluate whether or not you can get help and to go into a hospital or whether or not you can get treatment, how more connected to treatment.
Yeah, this is, this is huge. I really can't express how important this is and how great this program is for our community. In our region, we've lost two major community hospitals in the past five years. So this is, this settles a major, and with some of the healthcare companies transitioning. A lot of people are left without primary care, without their mental health care. There's just a lot of delaying healthcare in this region. So to be able to access this type of service at any time and to have a dedicated staff to that, I think is just extreme. It's a really wonderful program. I'm glad it's here in Easton. And on top of that program, the referrals that we can make to these ancillary programs as well at low or no cost. And if there is a cost, we have benefits for data that's everybody to help. So we got, you know, the deck out is full, so we're ready to approach the process. It's a fantastic program. And speaking of community, this is the community that we're Um, and speaking of community, this is the community that we work with. Uh, you see a lot of logos on there. Uh, these are a lot of the, um, programs, uh, that are involved in our community or are actually run by folks in our community. Uh, and, uh, we're very lucky that we did collaborate with them, be a part of these programs, um, and really get that information back and forth because there's only so much that we can market out and only so much information that comes back to us. Uh, so partnering with these types of, uh, community-involved, uh, folks is, is huge. We'll be doing, uh, I don't know if you guys want to mention any time on any of these groups that you guys work with, um.
Yeah, I mean, we, we spoke at the House of Possibilities on their career day. We've kind of established a good relationship with them. That's, that's an important piece to me is being able to, to trust providers that you can refer people to. So we've been, um, kind of outreach and we work since we started that, you know, principle. Um, and we, we actually, so I was pretty familiar with, um, an organization called Mental Hope, which is for, um, it's a support group for family members who, um, have struggled with substance abuse issues. And they were trying to find a location around this area to have the support group, um, in person because of COVID and we connected them to the library. And so now they have flashlights and people there. So it's really, that's things that are important to me, is be able to, to be part of the network, to, to facilitate and help people, um, in, in Houston. So collaborations, um, to a lot.
Yeah, and that's just a partial list too. I mean, this, this list goes on and deeper and deeper. Um, there's just only so much space that I can fit onto the slide and my texts out. You wouldn't let me get any further than that, so. Uh, but they are out there and if, um, anybody is aware out there, it's always that, um, if there's any groups that need to be, um, a part of this group, we're happy with that. Um, and I just realized that the timer on this goes, so it might be a bit like, and I have a lot of that. So I apologize if we're going a little long. Uh, but the care team and interdepartmental collaboration is kind of where I wanted to end this. Uh, because, uh, in order to provide the service that we do, um, it's not just three people. It's, it's, uh, it's everybody. And you can see the list up there and again, I apologize, this list is probably short for who's actually involved in this program. But it's fire department, police department, ECS, veteran service, veterans' coordinators, SROs, public works, um, special education from the school department, from administration. I mean, you name it, everybody's been out there, but we're working, um, and it's been fantastic. This partnership also goes out to ancillary agencies outside of Houston and work inside of Houston. Through healthcare, brought from families. Uh, these are all folks that, uh, that really dedicate a lot of time and effort to it. So while we're privileged to be up here, the three of us to present this program, um, any chance I get to, uh, give accolades to the groups around people that are out there, um, making this program successful. I'll let you think about it. So that being said, uh, if there's any questions or any clarification we can make, happy to take.
Well, I hope you're not in a rush because I'm looking around and I see that we've all got notes and questions. It's a lot of information and it's, it's amazing stuff, so I don't want to rush through it. I don't want you to feel rushed and I don't want the board to feel rushed. So we'll start with you, Craig, if you want to.
First of all, I, I, I'm very impressed, um, with, with collaboration. Now, I, I spent like forty years in the juvenile corrections field, so I know a lot about the kinds of issues that you guys are facing right now and the kinds of collaboration that was not occurring, um, when, when I was in the, in the business and it's turned around a little bit now. I'm curious about when, when you, when you find out that someone's been hospitalized, what, what about HIPAA? Is that, does that get in the way of your finding out information or, you know, how, how does that work?
What kind of is it coming from?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, in the medical field, uh, we are bound by HIPAA in the respective of, um, at the police side, it's a little bit different. The information that we, uh, collaborate, we work around public information right now. So we, we take very good care never to, to breach that trust and competence and the breach HIPAA. Uh, but we use the public data as we have, uh, SIMS is a, is a great example of that. Uh, our public dispatch data is another good example where we can take public information, um, identify, um, where those resources need to go and address that. Um, so that's kind of the solution right now. Um, I know there's other things in the works between, um, on, on the state legislative side that the agencies. Uh, but as of right now, we do this public data.
So when Stephanie, when you mentioned that you go to see somebody in the hospital, how, how does that happen? Does it have to be somebody that you actually were involved with, with, with Chris and getting a person in the hospital?
So it can't be get notified from the police department.
So you already know those per, and they already know that you're, that you're going to be involved.
And then when we're doing meetings, like the, when we talked about the CPAT meetings and now bringing kind of a KF team meeting here, a lot of times, so a couple of things can happen. They can ask for, um, the family if they want to participate in the meeting. It's part of the collaboration, so you're getting their consent there. Or we'll take out names or any kind of identifying information. So we would say, like, we have a thirty-five-year-old in our, you know, town, that A, B, C, and D, and they're trying to collaborate in that way. So it's, it's challenging with HIPAA, right? But we're trying, we also want to be able to, uh, meet some of these needs and give them the help they need, um, and build some trust within our networks to be able to provide kind of information enough that we can make some decisions, but not anything that's going to be, um, uh, compromised, sensitive to someone's personal interest.
So when somebody is hospitalized, but we're not involved in it, you're, then it, it creates a problem where you can't actually access that person unless they really reach out to you or the family reaches out to you.
Family, a lot of times family.
And, and again, a first responder training is a big part of that. How we approach, um, how we approach these situations when we respond to them is, is a big piece of it. So we train our first responders to interact with them while they're on the scenes during these, uh, periods of, uh, crisis and say, is this somebody with like a four percent? Once we receive an informed consent, um, that kind of was the place to start to work and communicate with our officers. So training is a big part of it. Uh, we do a lot of training with them. And again, our healthcare collaborations, um, outside of the town of Houston is good. We have, uh, very strong relationships with this healthcare. Um, and they're, um, also trained what we do, how we do it and can offer those services as well to get that consent so that we can continue the service.
One of the two from the police side, um, you know, people go up to the park at the last, want to call. Hey, is it okay if I forward this, uh, community resource officer or the town clinician? That's a big thing a lot of people, a lot of people I work with are saying now when they send calls or this mental health, substance abuse domestic. And the second they say yes, they just, they say, okay, we're going to pass your information on, or is that okay? And like the results we're getting, it's kind of astonishing to see. Cause I'm getting, you know, my text message from someone work with, hey, uh, can you reach out to blah, blah, blah? Here's the report. Yep, already on topic. And the next morning, I demand, hey, damn, we already talked, okay, did you reach out to so-and-so? So we're getting that permission from them.
When they're going out on kind of crisis moments. But, I mean, it's been, um, really welcomed, I would say. I, you know, meeting with people, calling up the people.
People were the first one that did this. I worked in midnight, one days, but I was working in overnight shift and we got a call for suicidal party and. Through some training I've had and working with Stephanie, I, we, we don't want to say we're not taking it serious, but you can kind of tell when it's legit, like, yeah, this person is actually like, oh, did you harm themselves or it's, they're getting frustration by it. They don't know what to do. They, they're looking for help, but that's where, where they go. And, you know, I'm not with theirs, I'm listening. I think we're all agreeing, see, we'll go to the hospital tonight. But instead of us forcing, which Tim mentioned earlier, there was such a blow, go on your own. Speak to someone at the hospital. Tomorrow morning, I would have to be working with Stephanie and said, we'll follow up with you tomorrow. That's okay. We showed up at noon time, we found our discharge, showed up at noon time and it was kind of blown away that it wasn't just police feeding her ass. Yeah, well, we'll follow up with you tomorrow, just go to the hospital. We went, we think it's been an hour and a half and her house was talking. Figured out what the problem was, she was frustrated, et cetera. And then, and let Stephanie offer tons of different resources and, I mean, it's good that we have help there. That's a success of, it's if we're not having to go to that house over and over. I mean, we will, honestly.
Yeah, it's meeting them where they're at with their journey. I, I think that's a big part, you know, ensuring that trust relationship between them. We're sure that what we're doing is private, secure and best for them, um, I think is a good point. Meeting them, because sometimes you go to these homes and they're not at that point in the journey where they're ready for those services. That's okay, so, uh, but that's why we have, uh, a whole line that's on. That's why we have ancillary services for the town to hold visitors as well, uh, so that they're ready for them.
It's very exciting, so thank you.
No, it's great.
That's a good question. Uh, do you want to go to next, Jeff?
Sure, my new sponsor's nice.
I'm mixing around the world.
I know.
I feel bad, Jen always ends up going last and.
Sometimes I'm first though, so it's a total wild card. Um, I often like to take these things in and kind of, um, give back some commentary first and how my process, what, what, what presented on. And the first thing that jumped out was this, um, the focus on data-driven decision-making and really coming at it and knowing where the needs were. And, um, it's been really exciting watching this evolve over the past, what, five, six years now? Um, literally from the ground up and it's taken a lot of really talented people, um, yourselves, but a lot of people in this community have done really great things to make this happen. So, um, you know, meeting a really, really critical need because it's just really hard to figure out how to navigate these things out there for people. Um, but the thing that I think struck me the most as I was listening to you speak was how you use language and focus on it in a very human-centric way. You, you center language, you, um, speak in a way that de-stigmatizes a lot of these things. And I just, I really commend that. I think that's such a challenge because a lot of times out in the broader world, you see this more like aggressive approach and I don't feel that energy in this space. So I really, that's really huge, um, and just really well noted. Um, I know there's a ton of money coming into the state, a ton of money that the state has around mental health resources. And how's that trickling down and how are you kind of watching or grappling? It was not trickling down, like, what is the situation there? Cause you hear these big headlines, but is it actually something you're able to leverage at this point? And kind of building on that, what are your biggest needs or where's, like, if you had resources now, would it be more program, training, people? So it was like, it was a brilliant question. So pick and choose what you want to answer and then I do a follow-up.
I see Ken looking at me.
I just, it's so exciting. Like, it's just, it's a really great resource, so I started with a one-on-question, but.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I, I think a lot of the programs, uh, well, the score we've gotten so far, uh, putting full-time dedicated employees is, um, is a huge part of it. So, uh, the financial resources that have been available to me to happen is, uh, one of the biggest parts to the success of what we've had so far moving forward. Um, a lot of the programs we've instituted so far have been, uh, low cost, I think is a good way to put it. Uh, we've been trying to maximize the impact, um, on the community without a huge impact on the fiscal liability of funds. So, uh, a lot of the stuff that we've been approaching, uh, again, we've been making a lot of collaboration with healthcare agencies. Uh, one of the, I think, best examples I can give would be Boston Children's Hospital. Uh, and they have been coming down regularly, three, four, five, six months a year. Um, and, uh, giving us structures, program availability, uh, for car scene, water safety, ice safety, what we do with homeless kids and this kind of stuff. Uh, so those, those relationships have been really good and those relationships aren't just isolated, so they're, they're, they must help for them as well. Um, and grant funding is, been one of those things we've been seeking out pretty well as well, um, trying to. Reason I was looking in your direction was opioid funding.
Right.
I think you move that as.
Sure, so, uh, there's a couple of different revenue streams on both the federal and state level that, uh, are wonderful and we're not there before. Uh, the first and one of the ones that we, um, have really tried to use to supercharge a lot of our efforts in the health and community services area is ARPA, um, right? The American Rescue Plan Act, a post-recovery, financial recovery bill also had a tremendous amount of flexibility for addressing mental health resources, not just, you know, the pandemic didn't just impact us all in, in the very literal sense between the economic impacts of a shutdown and the health impacts for people who contracted COVID. But it was a deeply, in a way that's really jarring how we kind of rubber-banded back to everything's normal, but it was a, a collect, a shared traumatic experience for everyone. And, and at a certain baseline, but also deeply personal for some people who lost people. Um, and so thankfully that federal, uh, money has very broad, uh, use for really anything that can be attributed to mental health recovery. So we use those grants to get this program off the ground. Uh, we still have access to that, uh, for about eighteen more months. And, um, we also now have revenue coming through the, what's called MOLA, the Massachusetts Opioid Litigation, uh, Association. Those funds are not on the scale, uh, of, of ARPA, um, but they are still impactful, uh, and meaningful. So what we can perhaps do with those funds and actually Deputy Director Honan will be taking the lead on managing that program moving forward for the town is, um, having that because of the way the settlements are structured, there's a balloon payment upfront. We appropriated about two hundred fifty thousand into stabilization, I think it was in May. Um, and then moving forward, those payments won't be of that magnitude, it'll be, you know, mid-five figures, but still enough, um, that we can lean on that the next ten to twenty years to supplement and add an additional revenue stream to some of the programs that we're already doing. And the remainder would have to be absorbed into operations, which is something that we're going to do, uh, everything we can, uh, to do. We view this, um, I, I, I think it's quite clear how the board feels about programs like this, but, uh, our kind of shared administration, the department heads of the leadership here, all the way down to the, the staff doing the real work. There is, we believe in this mission and we, we think this, we see the value. I mean, we, we joked, um, I hope, and it's not too cynical, but I think Stephanie was here for a day and your bandwidth filled up instantly and it has not stopped. And so we know that obviously that need was there, it was not being met. We are doing more to meet it. We're building resources, uh, um, on top of that with things like interface, working with the schools who also have, uh, a huge, uh, effort and emphasis on this so that we could try to make it as sustainable as we can and hopefully build on it as we move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's one good point to, I didn't, uh, forget one, uh, one aspect. Uh, we've also, uh, Florida Kennedy has secured, um, multiple insurance over the years as well. Uh, and they do a lot of our work on the seams to make a lot of this happen, so, uh, I don't want to be remiss in that regard as well. But getting those different experts, I believe they're from, from, is that correct?
Last year's attending Brown right now, yeah, Mr. Salski to one.
Yeah, yeah, so we're getting experts from, uh, different fields and different academic centers as well from the annual championship program as well. So utilizing resources from all over the place is really, uh, it's the most effective market.
And I actually, I, when I had one more thing to that too, that Captain Mimosi touched on, with trying to not have as large of a budget impact as sometimes these things may, that, um, I didn't mention I should, which is that one of the ways we've been able to, to pivot some of our existing human resources to do some of this work is that the unions have been on board and they deserve recognition for that too. Um, not saying this because you're, I don't know, are you still on the E-board?
Oh, no.
Okay, well, and any of that, I mean, police and fire unions are not always famous for getting along great with management and with, um, I guess some of the more, um, you know, community-based programs in, in some communities around the United States. And all the way back to, think about how far we've come from, you know, it, it, it was a, a huge dust-up, not here, but in some parts of the state, just when Narcan came out, right? And, um, we've had unions who have been on board with these programs, starting in their infancy of, okay, let's have staff and not just EMS, but also law enforcement, have Narcan. Let's pivot away from criminalization on these, uh, areas, um, and not having a price tag attached to it, which is not the case in every municipal government. And, you know, working with volunteer, uh, nurses at first and now across these agencies, um, and not having it be in conflict, but in collaboration with the unions, that, that's part of how it's been able to be done without it having a large price tag as well. And so I think I would be remiss and I think the chiefs would agree with that, um, that the unions have been very supportive of, um, you know, uh, new, effectively, I mean, very, very new job duties, right? I mean, we, we're a heavily unionized environment, not just in public safety, but, um, for good reason. Management can't just declare, well, your job's different, so go do all these new responsibilities for the same rate of pay. You have to collaborate and, and bargain and the unions have been, um, completely on board and willing to, to help make these things happen. So that's been a huge part of that too.
That's great.
Yeah, the guys have been excited to do it. Made up bike safety days of the day. We had, uh, DBW members there tuning up bikes and, you know, playing around with the kids, getting them on their wheels. And, uh, I was there with this bicycle riding around. Um, it, it, it's great. So we see you guys getting involved with the community, the community getting involved with us, and that's, that's, that's a huge part of it. They're excited to do it, which is awesome.
Great.
All right, Mark.
It's tough act to follow. No, we, you guys, you know, hearing all this conversation, being part of this years ago and supporting it through and, uh, it's, it's interesting how every industry's professional service, this evolution and there's change. And what you're doing is perfectly appropriate, logical, uh, incredibly beneficial to the community and in, in pioneering, really. I mean, you're changing the way things are done that match what's going on in the world. Um, and it's, you know, I mean, Stephanie, you're, you're the missing puzzle piece in all of this. And, um, you know, to Jen's point, you use language that I really appreciate. Um, we, everybody in this room, sure, has had somebody in their life that has had mental struggles, uh, drug struggles, all sorts of things. And you say, meet them on their journey. I love that. Um, the fact that you go not in uniform, um, I think shows your vulnerability entering into that situation. So the guard is down. Um, Stephanie, I don't know if you've ever been in a situation where you're going to a home, police dogs are not uniform and you can see a difference in the reaction. Um, I, I, I think it's absolutely incredible what you're doing, the support and your department heads. What you're doing, the support of your department heads, uh, and your hard work in creating this is going to be recognized throughout the state and beyond. I think the more that happens, your financial streams that you need to exist and to, to keep doing good is going to increase dramatically. Um, the fact that Easton is, is a community that's starting this, and you guys are at this ground level is, it's amazing. I can't thank you enough, honestly, and everybody in this room. You, you, you will say lots. It's about a month. And the family members who are affected by those people who are having struggles, you give them hope, too. I mean, that's, it's just, it's amazing.
Is that it? You have a pretty long list over there, Mark.
No, this, this is just my thoughts.
I just wanted to change it. I, I also wanted to call out, I think the big takeaway for me in hearing everything that we, that you talk about is the language and the compassion that goes behind that. You know, people are ill and they don't, there's a lot of shame that goes with this. And they don't need to feel worse about it. They need to feel that they can have a trusted relationship, especially with law enforcement, where you're going to have much better results for that. And I, I think that's really amazing. I made a note that during COVID, you know, one of the unintended consequences that worked out well is that the way it brought all of our, our um, uh, police, fire, DPW schools administration always had great relationship, but I feel like going through that shared trauma together really brought people close together. And then to have you join Stephanie after that relationship, like you're, you, it was worth the wait. You are the perfect person. I've seen the three of you interact together. It, it really is incredible. I remember when Wings of Hope first started and we were meeting with some other communities. We were only probably about six months old. And we were talking to towns that had substance abuse coalitions. They couldn't get things done and they couldn't believe the stuff that was done in only six months. And the key to that was, we had a superintendent of schools that was willing to say, we want to address this issue. We had police and fire and public health that wanted to work together on that. Remember when we had the first meeting with you and Gary and we were talking about Narcan? And it was like, we don't even know what, how to use it, like, is it a shot? Is it like, I think originally it was like an EpiPen.
Yeah.
And you had to get trained on it. And you said, we'll, we'll figure it out. Like, you were always so proactive and, uh, you know, encouraged to do that. And that was, that was, it meant a lot to me to see this stuff along the way. When we were talking about trying to have that volunteer, um, be able to go out for the follow-up, the town's attorneys, we worked on that like a year. They were like, you can't do it because of this, you can't do it because of that. I was like, people were doing it. How are they doing it? Well, they're not doing it the right way. And I mean, we worked on it, worked on it until we could find a way to make it happen that worked with IPA and, you know, uh, but, but you guys, you continue to, we interviewed other places and, and you stuck by it through the whole time. So you were very committed and still are. Um, uh, measuring the results, I love that you can put that information into the portal to be able to see it. I can't wait for a year to see what kind of results did you have. And that was one of the things with Wings of Hope that we measure through the youth surveys. We can see the trends on areas that people, originally it started because of an opioid overdose epidemic, but really the biggest problem with youth is alcohol. And so that's what the grant for Wings of Hope really focuses on with the other things. But we figure if we can stop kids and families having those dialogues when they're young, when they get older, they'll have better tools to deal with that. And we do see the results of that, um, that we measure. So I think that's really important. Um, drug takeback, what we always say is one of the best things that you can do for your families. Right off the bat, the easiest thing is to get drugs out of your house. And when people bring those back, I love drug takeback day because people want to tell you their story. And, you know, if somebody comes with a big bag, it's somebody in their family's probably been sick and they wanted to remember that person. And it's, you know, it's, it's really, it's great when the community is able to come out and do that. I didn't even know that you had the shops available now. So that, that must be pretty new.
Uh, you're talking about the community in this program, yeah?
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Twenty twelve.
That's excellent. Um, that was much needed. We had a lot of requests for that. And then last but not least, children's beds for mental health. I mean, this has been a real crisis for our state. And there's been people in Easton that I'm friends with that testified with them at the State House. You know, uh, uh, one person in particular, their child was in the hospital in the emergency room for over a month because they couldn't find a place for them. So to be able to have these resources and work with the school on these, this is a game changer. And, you know, I really commend you all for finding these resources, making the connections. It's so easy to say, we can't do this, or it's a lot of work. But to get to yes on these programs, the community should be thrilled to know that we have such, such a great team, so intelligent, compassionate, and ready to just roll the sleeves up and do the job. So. So that's it. I'm not sure my comments. Does anybody else think of anything else?
I want to think of a lot of things.
I'm sorry.
I'll talk on, off line.
All right. Anybody in the audience have anything they want to add? All right. Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, Allie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allie. I appreciate it.
So next we have the discussion and vote on buck slip authorization for Community Emergency Paramedicine Program, Emergency Fat Information Coming to Community Services. Part of ours.
That's it. Just a little easier. Kind of a natural segue. As Tim mentioned, we have been capitalizing the past couple of years on influence that have found their way to us for the most part. Um, and they've been some very unique individuals. Um, and when I get a request from an intern that I want to come work with you, you have to then figure out what can we help them do. So it seems kind of natural to me to have them check off something we just don't have time to get on. And when we look at, there were ten points in our, our initial application, a repetitive application to the state for our program. And one of them was evaluating personal emergency preparedness. Well, if we look ahead at the national calendars and all of that, September is National Personal Emergency Preparedness Month. So we have a young woman working with us this year, Bianca J. Mo. Um, and she is really a unique individual in that she comes to us from Homberg, Homart and Williams Smith Colleges up in Geneva, New York. She's a double major in French and French studies, French of studies, I never say that right, um, psychology and a minor in public health. Her ultimate goal is to become a doctor in psychology and get her master's in public health and work for CBC. Um, she actually, um, was responsible for founding a new set program in a community that she has been a part of. Um, she's a really great asset to us. Uh, so we charged her with basically building out the month of September for the town of Easton. Um, and that is, we hope it'll look like some community events, some classes. Um, and one of the pieces to that is we'd like to do a buck slip in the, um, it's the trash bill that will go out in arriving people's mailboxes at the beginning of September. And for anybody not familiar with buck slips, it's a third of a piece of paper that comes with one of your bills. Um, it touches on a lot of areas. We're hoping people end up putting it on their refrigerators or tucking it into some things, a bookmark and go back to it. Um, one of the events that she's building out for us, because we, we've talked about a lot of what we're doing with some of these other programs, it's taking down barriers, right? So challenging her to look at a real simple thing. And that's that the state has provided us with these beds, right? We get them for free and we can hand them out and tell people, go ahead and put your photo IDs in them. And, you know, they might come a day when a tornado goes through town and you're going to really want to just grab something that has all your insurance documents in it and copies of your ID because you can't go back in the house, right? What's the matter? Well, for a lot of people, they might not have access to a photocopier. They might not have somebody that's going to walk them through. So we're setting up events with the housing authority and App Rodney here. We will do just that. You bring us the documents and we'll take care of making the copies. So we're really excited about a lot of the efforts that she's coming up with. Another initiative she's coming up with is you're going to start seeing these around town. Um, Code Red is a system through the sheriff's department that the chiefs have access to, um, to get information delivered to all of us on our homes. She's created these great old codes that are, download the app and use a QR code as well as the links and the explanation of the program. She's going to be out at the children's races, at our mini touch of truck events that are at the town pool, um, during the weeks during the summer, handing these out, handing stickers to the kids with the QR code. Um, so this request for the buck slip is just another way to get information out there on personal emergency preparedness. Um, and we're hoping you'll be able to do it.
My phone.
Very timely.
Yeah, great idea.
Great.
I'm so glad that you were able to come with these because as we work on different projects together and there's always something new and exciting, like I can't even keep track of all the stuff that's happening. So to be able to bring this forward and let people know about it is great. So I'm thrilled. It's a great idea to put the buck slips in. Great way to reach people. Um, Craig, do you want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the buck slip authorization, Community Emergency Premedication, sorry, Paramedicine Program Emergency Preparation Information going out with the bills on, in September of two thousand twenty-three.
Second, Lynn.
Fodger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thanks, Kristen.
All right. So that's it from our public safety team for, uh, for public health right now. And now we're going to go into discussion and vote on the lease of the property of Stonehill College, three twenty Washington Street.
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. I'm very excited to report that in your packet for consideration tonight is a lease agreement that would allow the town to construct a fire station on the northwestern corner of Stonehill College's property, known as Daley's Corner. It's on the, uh, it's on Main Street, across the street from Hilliards to the south, uh, as part of the proposed Public Safety and Public Works Facilities Replacement Project. Uh, under Massachusetts general law, any lease approved by the board uh, in excess of three years is, basically has to be voted on again by town meeting. And so as part of that October twenty-third special town meeting, where voters will decide if this project is going to advance from a debt authorization perspective, we'll also make sure to have the lease authorization because they are intertwined. Uh, you can't do one without doing both. Um, so that will be put forward there. Uh, and should the project not be approved by voters, there's no binding effect of this lease on the board. So there's no financial risk to the town there. The lease has been reviewed by Town Council Lisa Mead. It conforms to the letter of intent regarding the sale that was executed by the board in the college in May of this year. Uh, an example of the site layout of a fire substation is in the lease. It's also on the new project website, eastonpsw.com. It's bookmarked in your packet as well as for the public's benefit. The final layout will be subject to the detailed design phase, which would not occur until after voters have a chance to approve the project, if they do. Um, we're really appreciative of Stonehill College's continued partnership with the community. Um, I happily recommend approval of this lease. The first seven years, rent is one dollar. Uh, so I think that's a pretty good year, a pretty good price. Uh, the college, um, prepared a, a statement that I'd asked Dottie if it's all right I could read as far as their perspective on the lease, which is, "The agreement between Stonehill College and the town of Easton to establish a fire station on approximately five acres of the college's property, located at the corner of Main Street and Washington Street is just the latest testament to a long and valued relationship between the town and the college. Proceeds from the lease agreement after, uh, year seven, when it's not one dollar. Uh, will establish an endowed scholarship with eligibility preference for students of Easton and children of first responders. This will also strengthen the bonds between the college, the town, and the first responder community. Stonehill is confident that the town will be excellent stewards of the land on which a fire station is leased, and that it will serve the needs of the community for many years to come." So it's a fifty-year lease with a twenty-five-year renewal. Um, I am happy to answer any questions the board may have about the document.
Do you have a quick question? So, um, in this, it says town meeting approval, and you mentioned that it doesn't pass town meeting approval. Nothing counts. What if it passes town meeting approval, but then it fails this fall? Same situation?
So we, it's a great question and not that we are not all optimists, very confident here, but we did work in a five-year period in the lease that Stonehill will basically toll this lease offer, uh, for the town for five years, should it fail this fall. Because as is very, very common with a large project, if it fails, usually the community uh, doesn't just pack it, pack it in and walk away. When you've spent a half million in two years on design, you might retool or something like that. But provided it would be approved within five years of a, of a, hopefully a hypothetical fail vote, the lease would still be on the table. So we have.
Fantastic.
We have a plan for that.
Craig?
I'll just read them off.
Oh, I didn't, I just.
I will say one other thing. I know it's been incredible, hard work to get to this point. So, uh, thank you.
Thanks.
And Mike, Elizabeth, and you, Dottie, were involved because that was not just, Mike looked like one item here, but it was a lot of work.
It was, it was.
Anything, Jen?
No questions. I just agree with Mark. Thank you to all the parties involved in making this, get to this point.
It was a big decision for the college and, you know, it was a big decision for the town. And that working, having that good relationship over all these years, like Father Denny mentioned, makes a big difference. Um, when I first started on board, um, and that was around the time that he first started, I saw the relationship really change, even in the relationship with public safety, because they have their own police department and they didn't really interact with our police department that much. And, you know, that was a change when he started, that we worked more collaboratively, I would be on calls with certain snow or other emergencies where Stonehill was invited to the table for all of those things. And they really, that really meant a lot to them, those relationships. They had a real fondness for our first responders because they do take good care of the students at that college. And they look at this, that it's going to be a real benefit to the students and the families. And, um, you know, but it also is giving up a part of their land. And, uh, so we, we work very collaboratively and thoughtfully. I think that, you know, using the proceeds for college, for, um, college scholarships for, for the students in Easton was just a real forward thinking and, and just a wonderful opportunity for us. It does, it just shows that it's a very strong relationship. So I appreciate you reading that, Connor.
Thank you.
So if you'd like to make a motion, Craig?
I move to approve the lease agreement with Stonehill College and the town to lease land owned by the college at the intersection of Washington and Main Street, as detailed in the reference lease agreement, with the acknowledgement that the lease must be approved by town meeting in order to go into effect and further authorize the chair and the select board to execute the sale.
Second, Lynn.
Fodger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Next, discussion and vote on issuance of requests for proposals for the sale of town-owned property, Morel Hall, three sixty Washington Street.
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. So as the board will recall, the school committee of Easton last year voted to transfer care and custody of Morel Hall to the select board, effective upon the occupancy of the Blanchett Ames Elementary School, which we're very happy occurred this holiday season. Following this town meeting in November last year, voted to authorize a select board to sell the now vacant former school. The town, working with Granite City Partners, has since then prepared a request for proposals for the sale of town-owned property, which is Morel Hall, uh, that is in front of you in your packet. And we have a couple of hard copies for the board for your consideration. Um, should you vote to approve the issuance of this RFP, it will be published tomorrow on the town website and in required locations and publications under Mass Procurement Law thirty B, along with area newspapers. A schedule is included in the RFP for prospective respondents, along with all required documents, appraisal information, property information, so that interested buyers have everything that they need. Uh, there will be a sitewalk available for folks and the responses would be due by Tuesday, September twelfth. The select board will be the final reviewing authority on proposals and may require presentations or interviews at public meetings of yours in the fall for many prospective firms or organizations submitting proposals to purchase the property. Although if the property is not subject to a historic preservation restriction consistent with our communication to voters last fall, uh, town meeting, the RFP encourages and provides points, it's a basically a qualitative evaluation matrix, and provides points to proposals which prioritize the preservation of the exterior of the hall and which would be in keeping with its previous purposes as a site for education or the promotion of civic and communal engagement. Responsive proposals must comply with a variety of minimum qualification criteria, such as developer's experience, references for comparable projects, programmatic reuse of a property. And then from there, if they meet those minimum standards, will be comparatively and competitively analyzed using a qualitative matrix, including the purchase price that is offered, the adaptive reuse of a property proposed, the experience and qualifications of a respondent team, their financial capacity to execute on their proposal, the benefit. their financial capacity to execute on their proposal, the benefit to the community of their proposal, as well as what type of property management plan that they would have in place to take care of the property should we transfer it to them. Joe Shea and Holly Robinson of Granite City Partners are here tonight. If there's any questions about the RFP, the three of us are happy to answer them.
Can we just talk, can you talk a little bit about the goals of the sale and the development?
Sure, Joe and Holly with them.
I think that's kind of important.
Sure, let me pull the RFP up.
Hi, Joe and Holly. Welcome back.
So what we would like to see in some of the really important parts here, you know, so obviously Merrell Hall has served many, many, many years as a public school for students in Easton. There's no restrictions outside of those placed on town meeting, by town meeting on the select board for what a property could be reused for. And so when we were going to voters last fall, we laid out that we wanted to prioritize kind of adaptive reuses of this property, which would have a future use, whether for public or private education, or some type of civic or communal based use. It's not mandatory that it be kind of open to the public because if we were going to mandate that it be educational and open to the public, then Eastern Public Schools would be running it, right? So it gives some flexibility to folks to lay out their vision as part of their bid for how they would take over that property and reuse it, hopefully preserving as much of it as they could to advance that mission. Joe, Holly, if there's more specifics in there, if you want to add to that or if the board has any particular questions about it.
Absolutely. Again, thank you, just for, for the at-home viewer, we're Joseph Shea and Holly Robinson of Granite City Partners. We're a real estate advisory and civil engineer. Work with many municipalities on issues exactly as this, whether it's land acquisition or disposition in this case, and how to craft. The document that is before you tonight for your approval is a, is a request for proposals based upon a qualifications and criteria matrix. When municipalities dispose of property, typically have two avenues available to them under Massachusetts general law. One is bid it, take the highest price and get rid of it. But it was never the intent for this property because you lose all control. We have worked closely with the town, which has been tremendously attuned to what might be the proper future uses or range of uses at this site that is part of it articulated. So there is a RFP that has qualifications and criteria that will allow you to weigh in and weigh the relative pros and cons of various uses, such as the civic engagement plan, the sophistication of the contractor, the contractor's financial backing. Price is one of the criteria. So the, the landscape of choices doesn't preclude many uses, but it certainly weighs what the town has communicated as the highest value or best possible uses on this corridor, has the most advantageous criteria. So if somebody comes in and hits you with a big number, it doesn't mean that you're rooted in not structured that way.
Right.
It's intentionally not structured that way. The partnership with the member comes in and gives you the best value.
Okay.
Also, it's structured with respect to zoning in that area, in harmony with the probable zoning along that corridor. So for real estate proposals, although they can't be excluded, are certainly not advantageous.
Right.
With real estate there. What we battle with all the time at the moment is a large box self-storage facilities popping up everywhere that oftentimes may or not in harmony with the neighborhood. That can't be excluded by law, but certainly is not advantageous.
Right.
The document before you tonight controls to find the best value.
And I think it's important to note that not excluding someone from the right to submit a proposal is not the same thing as the board having any kind of binding on itself that you have to award it. You don't. Under procurement law, you know, the sale of public property is understandably a sensitive and delicate process. If for some reason we put this out, we don't, we either get low-quality bids, non-responsive bids, the board can just cancel the process. We have no obligation to award if you feel it's not in the public interest to do so. So by commencing this, we're not locking the board or future selves into any specific sale, should you be dissatisfied with what you receive.
And if there is, if there are bidders, is there opportunity to negotiate for a best and final offer? Or do you take it at face value for what is offered or?
There, there is an opportunity to negotiate. This is a qualifications-based selection, not a big, technical deal. And then because you have laid out the criteria you see as preferential, there are opportunities to negotiate certain terms in the agreement. For example, the town has articulated their, their desire to make sure that something happens to get time in. So within the package, it is a record of giving the timeline for work to begin or building permit to be pulled into the policy specifics.
We want it to begin within two years. And a building permit may need to be within?
It's a building permit within three months and then work underway within two years. So the town is clear, they don't want anybody to land back this. Buy this and sit on it for five years, that's, that's unacceptable strategy. If the document has the appropriate provisions within it, if somebody needs three years, you can negotiate that.
Right, so, so specifically the way that we, working with council, trying to find a way to address this is that it's in, we've included a form of purchase and sale agreement in the RFP. And one of the mandatory semitals is basically, you know, a filling, a pre-filling of this. And we have a section called the post-closing agreement. So the, that construction would need to commence within three months of issuance of a building permit. It's important to note that because this property is currently zoned as municipal, which is also addressed in here, this timeline lines up with your special town meeting schedule in the fall so that when you receive proposals, should there be one that you find advantageous, you wish to award, we then would go to town meeting and rezone the property and make sure it appropriately fits with the proposed use. So we don't, I'm just clarifying, we are not suggesting September 12th bids are due in three months later. A project's going to be, you know, with shovels breaking for ground, it's not that, that fast. But that clause is included. What we put in the purchase and sale is that the board retains the right to negotiate with, if you believe that the developer has a fair timeline and there's good reason for a timeline that's maybe different than this. But you will not negotiate the existence of a post-closing agreement. So the exact deliverables will be subject to negotiation at, you know, the purchase and sale stage. But the board does not intend to negotiate this clause out entirely.
I think that's important to know.
All of this, yeah. The amount of care that has gone into the creation of this qualitative criteria approach, obviously this is the first time we've heard this, we've had some discussions about this. If there's a way to do it, I believe this is the way. I believe over time in the history of this town, we've learned. And, you know, things have worked out, some haven't. But this is the culmination of those learning points. You know, for me, I don't want that area to drastically change. And I think this gives us the latitude to be selective about the town, the latitude to be selective about what does go there so it doesn't disrupt the area. You guys have worked incredibly hard to create all of that so, so we can have this. It's all, it gives the town freedom to select what we want.
Craig?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Mark just said. I was, I was very impressed with the document and the amount of work that you two put into it, along with Connor and Leo Staff and the rest. But it really gives us the framework so that we can decide, yeah, this is really what it should look like and this is what we want to do in this particular space. So thank you for the work that you put in. Appreciate that.
Jen?
I agree with every that has been said, no questions. It's just crafted in a way that ensures that we are thoughtful and very mindful of the impact this decision will have for the future.
Well, it's been a real pleasure to work with both of you. Holly, you're newer to us, so it was great to get to know you. Joe, you know a lot about the community, you've been part of our team for many years. And I think that's really helpful in working with an agency that really has a feel for the community, what the board's perspectives are, what the town administrators, you know, thoughts are. So you did a really great job putting all of that together to come up with this. All right, if there's nothing else, Craig, would you like to make a motion to, to accept the, the RFP?
So move.
Second, Lynn.
Fodger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Next is Sircage Contracts of Awards for Southeastern Regional Services Group.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. Attached in your packet, so we bundled these, so this is item 13 and then you have items or letters A, B, C, and D. These are a variety of office supply and public works, Sircage contracts. You have paper supplies and office supplies from W.B. Mason, as well as water and sewer treatment chemicals and sandstone and other supplies for public works. These are the contract awards. And your vote would authorize Dottie as chair to sign individual contracts with these vendors as they come in after we vote them. So if the board has any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. And otherwise, you could just vote them as a slate for approval and we'll have Dottie execute when they come in.
Preference.
Any comments or questions?
No.
No.
Okay, do you want to make a motion to include this as a slate, Craig?
So move, Fodger.
Second, Lynn.
Fodger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, so now we're at item 14, Contract Award DPW 2024-09 Blue Sky Restoration Services for repair services at Tufts Farm.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. Unfortunately, a home located at Tufts Farm, which is a property maintained by the Conservation Commission, suffered pretty significant interior damage late this winter from a deep freeze bursting interior water pipes. Remediation work was performed on an emergency basis so as to not jeopardize the structure of the home. And so the attached is a contract to pay for those services that were rendered. It would be funded from available Conservation Commission revolving funds that were generated from renting the property. I recommend approval.
All right, anybody have any questions on that?
Was, was the house not occupied at the time?
No, not at the time.
All right, Craig?
So I move to award Contract DPW 2024-09 to Blue Sky Restoration Services for repair at Tufts Farm.
Second, Lynn.
Fodger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Item 15, Acceptance of Minutes dated July 10th, 2023.
So move, Fodger.
Second, Lynn.
Fodger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Next is Town Administrator Notes.
Dottie, are you going to cover the baseball league? Okay, so I just wanted to thank Public Works, Police, Fire, and National Grid. We obviously had some pretty strange weather in town this weekend with a confirmed tornado in Easton on Saturday, not something that is supposed to happen. But they had crews in overnight. You know, when, when power went out, I was concerned that this would be another, you know, windstorm where 90% of the community is without power for extended periods, which we've had happen a couple of times. But this was really a much more focused event where there was a pretty, you know, significant amount of damage, thankfully, in a more, I guess, direct path, which has been really hard for some of those folks impacted. Anyone who needs support, I'd encourage to call our office or contact Health and Community Services. But Police, Fire, and Public Works were working overnight to try to clear the roads and they did a great job. So just wanted to acknowledge that and say thank you.
Great. Select Board notes?
Tom said exactly those ones, say it's more second.
Craig?
Nothing either.
So I have two things. One thing I just wanted to mention is July 26th is National Disabilities Awareness Day. It's the date that the APA, Americans with Disabilities Act was implemented. So I just wanted to recognize that and thank Easton's community for observing that day and really caring, things like the new municipal buildings, the new school. A lot of that is done through a lens of accessibility for all. And in the new school, it does universal design, which when you go to see that on the 20th, you're going to see how that works for younger people, older people, and everybody in between. And so I'm very proud of our Commission on Disability that they're involved so much in all of these things in Easton and they care a lot about these new building projects, that buildings that are currently have accessibility challenges will be remediated, hopefully. The other thing I want to mention is that the U-12 baseball team was invited to participate in the Cal Ripken World Series. So I want to thank Police, Fire, and DPW. They had a parade for them on Friday night, up to the militia park, to the baseball fields. The, the team was so great, they're so polite, just really, really great kids. The families, everybody was out there cheering for them. And Senator Timblety and Representative Doherty were there, I was there. The select board presented them with a proclamation. And they gave us this official medal of the World Series, which I was really excited to get. We've never gotten a gift like this before. So we will keep this out of the display in the select board office and just want to thank them for their thoughtfulness and thinking of our, our board by giving us that. So, and that's all I have. So if there's nothing else, I would take a motion to withdraw.
So move, Fodger.
Second, Lynn.
Fodger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent, thank you. Thanks, Etab.